Good evening, everyone, and welcome. The Penfield School District community has lost a student from Penfield High School, Matthew Resniak, a freshman at Penfield High School. We extend our sympathies to Matthew's family and friends. A moment of silence will be observed in celebration of his life. Thank you. Board members, may I have a motion, please, that the agenda of October 21st, 2014 be approved as submitted? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, six in favor, non-opposed, thank you. May I have a motion, please, that the board approve the following consent agenda as listed? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, six in favor, non-opposed, thank you. In your packet is the treasurer's report for the month ending August 31st, 2014. May I have a motion, please, that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school launch fund cash report, and school launch fund revenue, and expense budget report for the month ending August 31st, 2014, be approved? Second. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, six in favor, non-opposed, thank you. We have no special reports this evening. And now is our visitor's speaking time. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board? All right, so we move on to our student representative. Good evening, Aubrey.
Good evening. Last week was homecoming, and it was fairly successful. And although it was raining all of Friday, the sun did come out for two hours during the pep rally. And games there included tug-of-war, musical chairs, relay races, hula-hooping contests, and in the end, the spear cup went to the seniors. In sports, football won 34 to 6 against Edison Tech on Saturday, and volleyball, both teams won their games. And on Saturday, at the football game, we had four food trucks, which everyone was excited about. And last Friday, there was Empire State Games for the Physically Challenged, which I participated in, and we, like, 30 juniors and seniors were bussed out to SUNY Brockport, and they were matched up with physically challenged children and Bay Trail students and high school students from the Penfield School District. And we played games like, there was long jump, there was races, and there was discus and shot put and different games, which was really fun. And next week, we're expected to have Red Ribbon Week, and there was the practice SAT last Saturday for juniors. And some things to look forward to, on November 4th, there's the annual chicken barbecue for Election Day, run by the girls varsity basketball team. And this Saturday, there's going to be the Halloween Dance, which is $5 to get in, and they changed it to Halloween after a fairly unsuccessful homecoming dance last year. Just a few hours ago, the boys soccer team beat Rush Henrietta 3 to 2 in overtime in their first sectional game. And girls soccer plays tomorrow. And lastly, there's been an issue at the high school regarding Wi-Fi, which everyone has been complaining about, because it's, they try to block social media, which often blocks messaging as well. And I know some of my teachers are complaining that they're spending money because they're going over data, but Dr. Mullany has been trying to address it, and it's actually, it has improved.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, and homecoming was really great. I want to thank the board members who were there. That was really a great day, and I'm really glad that the sun decided to come out for us, so that was really nice. All right, board members, any questions or comments for Aubrey?
I have a question.
Camille.
Aubrey, have you heard that tomorrow, the students and staff are encouraged to wear orange for, like, a bullying awareness?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I just heard about that.
But just, like, briefly, I just heard that you're supposed to wear orange, but I didn't know much more about it.
I think, that's all I know about it, is I think it's a bullying awareness, so I will be wearing orange, even though I probably won't be in the building.
All right, thank you, Camille. Any other questions or comments? All right, we now move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam?
Great, I'll just quickly comment on Camille's comment. There is a stamp-out bullying going on in many of the schools tomorrow, which is wear orange to really show awareness about standing up against bullying. And so many of the schools did, and I know a new club at the high school was involved in trying to get the word out, and I think it's the Be Kind Club, I'm going to make the name wrong, but, but, what is it?
Cool to be kind.
Cool to be kind. The Cool to be Kind Club was behind that initiative here at the high school, so I'll be shopping for an orange tie. I don't have anything orange. But it's a great, great event across K-12. So we do have some long superintendent reports tonight, but really interesting information. We have a student honor that I'll be sharing, and then we'll be turning to Mr. Pfeiffer around the instructional data report and a summary of the superintendent's conference day activities, and then over to Mark Sansucci for the veterans exemption, and we're waiting for Ray to be here for our audit presentation as well. So our Scholar-Athlete of the Week, Penfield High School senior Jake Palladino, was selected as a Scholar-Athlete of the Week by Time Warner Cable Channel 9. Jake was nominated by football coach Greg Geisler, and this piece was just featured on the October 18th and 19th newscasts over the weekend. And so just a congratulations to Jake in making Penfield very good. And now, over to Mr. Pfeiffer for our instructional data report.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. It's always exciting when I have the opportunity to really sit here and brag to the board and the public about the accomplishments of our students and staff, and so we'll be looking at the, our accomplishments from the past school year, from the 2013-14 school year. Starting off with some district statistics, and a reminder about really what drives us in terms of our direction from the New York State Education Department is the Regents' Reform Agenda, commonly misnamed or referred to as the Common Core Curriculum. It's always important, I think, to take the opportunity to remind the public that there is no Common Core curriculum. Curriculum is developed by each individual district. The decisions that are being made at the state level are referred to as the Regents' Reform Agenda, and focus on, yes, the Common Core learning standards from New York State, which we use to develop our curriculum, but also teacher leader effectiveness, or APPR, the Annual Professional Performance Review, and data-driven instruction. And all of those efforts are coming together to try and better prepare our students for college and careers once they graduate from high school. I also like to think about the fact that while we take that direction from the state, we certainly put our Penfield spin on it and make sure that we do it in a manner that's in line with our communities and our district's values through our mission statement. In the 2013-14 school year, the number-one goal of the Penfield Central School District was referred to as academic excellence, and our goal was that we would improve student and demonstrate improvement towards student achievement and academic excellence in all curricular areas. Those goals have since been revised, and we'll revisit the newer version of those goals later in the presentation. How are we making decisions as a district? We're always focusing on student achievement and the whole child, starting with the standards, building curriculum, implementing that curriculum in the form of instruction, assessing students' progress toward achieving the standards, using that data to inform professional development, and also using data that's gathered through our Professional Performance Review system, providing that professional development and starting again, it's a constant cycle at the district level. At the school level, focusing on the whole child, using real-time teacher observations and data that's collected at the classroom level on each student to drive instruction. And then, at the, in the classroom level, being responsive, using evidence-based strategies to ensure the success of our students, and at the whole school level, ensuring that we are screening students and then monitoring students' progress and providing instruction that's aligned to their needs and helping them achieve the standards. At the classroom level, our teachers are planning, implementing those lesson plans, assessing students' progress, and then evaluating how students are doing in terms of meeting the goals set by the teachers, and that's constantly focused on student achievement. Thanks to those efforts of our teachers and our administrators, and the hard work of our students, and the support of our families, we are very fortunate to be able to celebrate a large number of instructional recognitions from our performance on various assessments and other areas during the 13-14 school year. Penfield High School, as we mentioned before, was named in Newsweek Magazine's 2014 list of top high schools. They're actually number 306 out of 500 listed schools, but that reviews more than 19,000 schools across the country. So really, to be number 300 out of more than 19,000 schools is quite an accomplishment, and kudos to the entire high school staff and administration for their efforts, and a great job by the students in helping achieve that award as well. It's an outstanding recognition. Again, our music program throughout the district was recognized by the National Association of Music Merchants, which is a great award. We have an outstanding music program and visual arts program, and it's great to receive those accolades. Again, all of our schools recognized by Business First again in the 2013-14 school year. Cobles, once again, being the number-one elementary school out of 159 elementary schools in the Rochester area, Scribner at number seven, Harris Hill at number nine, and Indian Landing at number 18, all in the top 20. Outstanding work at the elementary level. Bay Trail coming in third out of 97 area middle schools, and again, the high school fifth out of 85 area high schools, and overall as a district number four out of 67 area districts according to Business First. Just amazing place to work with an outstanding group of professionals that we get to collaborate with every day, and very much appreciative of everyone's efforts. It's certainly, these results are the result of a team effort. Also, in Business First, the district recognized as a five-star district because it was in the top 10% of all upstate Western New York districts, 432 different districts. And that's based on the four-year analysis of those state test assessment results. So, again, continuing to receive those accolades based on our hard work. Cobles, Harris Hill, and Scribner Road recognized as New York State as reward schools for their performance on the assessments in 2013-14. And again, our school district was ranked number one in Monroe County in math, and number three in Monroe County in ELA on the 3 through 8 assessments, and it's worth staying. Again, in the fourth grade, we were number one in New York State. So I can't say it enough, thank you to the teachers, thank you to the administrators, and thank you to the students and family for all of their hard work. We celebrated our last board meeting that Cobles had been named a Blue Ribbon School, a national Blue Ribbon School, based on their academic excellence and closing achievement gap, so again, kudos to Cobles and Mr. Beavis, the entire staff there. And number two in Monroe County in math, and number two, tied for number two in ELA on the 14, 2014 3 through 8 assessments. Graduation rates have gone up. If you'll notice, there'll be a slide later in the presentation that shows a line graph representing this, but 96% of the class of 2014 received a Regents' Diploma higher. It's an outstanding statistic, up from 91% the year before. So very happy to hear that, and we can, our students continue to do very, very well on national assessments such as the SAT and ACT, certainly outperforming the New York State averages there, so great work on the part of our students. And we also reviewed this last week, I think, we had 140 students, I think this was part of last week's presentation, that were graduates that were named AP Scholars, and 11 of those named National Scholars, and we had a number of individual student and teacher awards throughout the year that we celebrated as well. So, again, it's great to be able to take the time to recognize that and consolidate it and put it all together. Great work on the part of everyone. So our Regents' results, just a snapshot here for the board and for the public to review. You'll see that there's a little bit of a breakout on the chart, that center column, now that we see Regents' exams being aligned to the Common Core and the Common Core learning standards. The performance levels of those assessments are a little bit different than just passing as they had been in the past with the previous set of Regents' exams, so we thought now, as we'll see other exams coming in this year, geometry, next year we'll also have English 11, that's aligned to the Common Core learning standards, and in 2017, we're anticipating a new global exam. We'll start to be looking at not just passing, but also proficiency and mastery rates on our Regents' exams with the new descriptors for the Common Core assessments as well. But as you can see, our passing numbers remain very, very high, and our mastery numbers are solid as well. Our ACT results have a long trend here, but a consistent trend of being above the New York State average on the ACTs, and similarly with our SAT results. Focusing on our graduation rates, again, you can see the top blue line there, number of Regents, percentage of Regents' diplomas going up from 91% of our students to 96%. Some of this may be attributed to, if you look at the very bottom, IEP diplomas are no longer offered, so some students who may have only achieved an IEP diploma, students with disabilities, may have been pushed a little bit further this year to earn a Regents' diploma, which is an outstanding advantage, I think, for those students moving forward. You can also see the other designations of diplomas there as well. Our data analysis, our trends continue to be stable and improve in most areas. Our comparative results, when we look at ourselves compared to our counterports in Monroe County, we continue to do very well, and our students are continuing to achieve and perform at very high levels across all areas. Opportunities for improvement, as the Common Core learning standards continue to now be creeping into the high school area, we need to continue to develop our guaranteed and viable curriculum alignment with those standards to ensure that our students are prepared for success. We need to make sure that we are adequately assessing our students and gathering that information to provide for solid instruction, meeting students' needs in terms of remediation and enrichment along the way, and we need to make sure that we continue to use the best instructional strategies and embed those instructional shifts that are at the core of the Common Core learning standards in that instruction as we go. And those are the actions that we'll be taking, and you've seen those comments before as part of the Office of Instruction Improvement Plan, and that's the work that's ongoing. It started over the course of the summer and continues. It was already approached by some of the geometry teachers for some more time to continue to work on their alignment piece. Our humanities department, social studies, and English are continuing to work together to try and prepare students for success on these assessments as they become aligned with the Common Core. So a lot of outstanding collaborative work moving forward, and we continue to try to provide professional development to support our teachers in providing outstanding experiences for our kids and ensuring that they're prepared for success on the assessments and beyond. So, again, a great deal of hard work has gone into everything, and I'm very proud of our students and our staff for the work that they've done and what they've accomplished. So in the 14-15 year, we've, again, got the slightly revised number-one goal regarding academic achievement and excellence, and that we will provide a safe and engaging learning environment promoting progress toward academic achievement and excellence, as well as the development of the whole student. And to that end, our schools will be, and have developed, began developing, action plans to meet that goal. They started at the Summer Summit at St. John Fisher College, working in their collaborative building-level teams to frame out their action plans, and are putting the finishing touches on those. And as you see there, those will be presented to the board and the public with the elementary schools on November 4th, and November 18th, Bay Trail, and the high school will be here to present their action plans as well. Questions?
Thank you. It's a lot to be proud of.
It is.
Board members, questions or comments? Barb?
Jim, I think it was in, it was either in today's paper, or maybe it was in yesterday's paper, that the Regents are looking at only having to do one, social studies Regents?
They have made some changes. There's two changes at work in terms of social studies. One of them is the new frameworks for the standards, and that's where I mentioned that the social studies assessment in 2017, that'll be the Global Two Assessment. They anticipate the first year that that'll be available will be 2017, but they are also looking at different pathways to graduation. So traditionally, we've had the CTE pathway. Now they're talking about a humanities pathway, which could involve more social studies or more foreign language and things of that nature, and then you could potentially, instead of taking one of the currently required Regents' exams, take either a different assessment that could be locally developed or some other type of project work that could lead toward certification in that way. So they're really looking at trying to make things, I think, a little bit more student-interest-based, so that students are maybe a little bit more motivated and engaging in studies that they find more meaningful instead of the same requirements for all kids. While that's been approved, those pathways have been approved, the guidance, the particulars, the details of how those will work, what those assessments will need to look like, how, what the process will be for developing and approving assessments, that's still, still to be released, so that really won't take effect. They're hoping to have it all, all that work finished by the end of this year, so I'd really see that being a potential possibility for our students, maybe next year, so.
Thank you.
It is exciting, though.
Catherine?
Now that the IEP diploma isn't offered anymore, and you said some of these, the graduation rates went up because they were encouraged to go to Regents, is there anything in between an IEP and a Regents' diploma?
Not really in between. I included some information in a response to one of the questions from another board member about what our kiddos are doing. We do have credentials now. There are two different pathways for our students with special needs. If they don't receive a local diploma, there are credentials that they have to earn, you know, that would be more along, maybe the life skills work and things of that nature, so that they're still graduating and still earning a degree.
Yeah.
There are still degree options, it's just that those options have changed.
Okay, that was the concern, you know, if you, if you can't achieve, or if your abilities are such that Regents is not an option, I mean, can you still graduate?
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
There's a lot of questions. The phone was going away, too. I thought I had heard that before.
I would have to check on that. I can't speak to that either way.
Okay. Because I thought with some of the new, I don't know, I'm not sure.
The new credential requirements.
Yeah, some of the new guidelines.
I can check on that for you.
Okay, thanks.
I'll put it in the answer to a question for the next meeting then. All right, next.
Thank you.
Now, we're ready? Okay. So along those lines, and in continuing to prepare for our work for this year, we had our Superintendent's Conference Day on October 10th, on Friday, and so we had a lot going on, and I can't thank the Office of Instruction staff, Lynn Rainey and Nicole Whitehead and Kristin Williamson, for all of their hard work, as well as the building administrators and assistant principals and teacher leaders for organizing this day. It really was a collaborative effort to put forth a great day. Our elementary faculty, including our library media specialists and our reading teachers, were engaged in work around the Common Core learning standards in ELA, working with instructional specialists from BOSI's, as well as another independent consultant around reading and writing instruction and strategies associated with the Common Core. They also had some collaborative time to work on report card descriptors and talk about report card evidence and do further curriculum alignment. At the middle school and high school, a lot of department collaboration time, working in grade-level teams and department teams, and then we also had the opportunity for our social studies and science departments to meet vertically 6:12 for part of the day and have discussions about vertical alignment, which were outstanding. Our mental health and our special education faculty had a presentation regarding FBAs and BIPs, functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans. We have now consistent documents, K-12, and a more consistent process, K-12, throughout the district. So everybody who's involved in those types of processes was here at the high school in the Commons for a full-day presentation, where they got an overview of the process and the forums, and then had some times to talk, had some time to collaborate and talk about what it will look like at each of their levels and in their buildings. Our special area faculties met K-12, so music, art, PE, and others met K-12, as well as by level and then also by building, so there were various levels of collaboration going on throughout the day. And again, the teacher leaders did a great job of preparing agendas for those days and putting together some meaningful work. Our paraprofessionals worked on their PD Now system videos, which I know there's still some glitches with that system, we continuing to try and work that out, and also had some time to complete what used to be global compliance and is now Safe Schools requirements throughout the course of the day. And our secondary hall monitors attended a mental health first aid training, which was a long day for them, but it really focused on recognizing some social, emotional, and maybe even in some cases, some physical issues in people upon first contact, and how to help them maybe recognize those symptoms and then get them the help that they need in an immediate fashion to avoid issues here in our school. So a very busy and packed day of learning for everyone. Lynn Rainey did issue a survey through our software system, My Learning Plan, to gather some feedback that we're going to use for planning future activities throughout the course of the year, and that's still coming in. We've got about another week of gathering data, but early returns are pretty positive on that so far, so we're excited about that as well, so it was a great day.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments? Now, Jim, on behalf of the board, Dr. Putnam, please, if you could convey our appreciation for everything that is being done in our school buildings. There's so much to celebrate, and, you know, just the sampling of the rankings that you gave us here is just unbelievable, and we all know it's not only the students, it's not only the parents, it's also the teachers, it's the support staff, it's just every person, the bus drivers, everybody who is here, providing an outstanding day for our students, so please convey our appreciation for everything that they do for our students every day.
Will do.
So I'd like to, just, in the agenda tonight is a resolution involving the veterans exemption, so just to remind everyone where we're at with regard to that, and bring the board and the community up to date with regard to our schedule, because that has been refined since the last time we talked about this. So what the, what the board will need to make a decision about in the very near future has to do with an exemption from taxes for veterans. So it was signed in December of last year, and because of the short timeframe, we didn't have an opportunity really as a board or as a community to digest it and to deal with it. So taxable status date is in March, so now is the appropriate time for us to consider it. Essentially, what it provides to the school district is that the legislation authorizes the school to make available an exemption that's been previously offered by counties, cities, and towns, so it's not entirely a new exemption, but it's new to schools. And how it works is that for an eligible veteran, an eligible veteran is a person who was in service, either in a combat or a non-combat role during a period of war, those periods are defined in the legislation, and if you serve during those periods of time, you're authorized to an exemption from your assessment. So, for example, one of the levels would be a $30,000 exemption. There's a variety of different levels of exemption. We'll be discussing this in a great deal of detail at the next board meeting. But whatever that exemption is, there are exemptions for non-combat and for combat, and then in either of those cases, if you have a service-related disability, a further exemption there. It's not means-tested, there's no income limit, so it's based solely on your, on the veteran's service and on the caps. So what does that do? What does that mean? Well, it lowers, it certainly lowers the tax bill for the qualifying individual, but at the same time, by necessity, it increases the tax bill for other properties in the school district, so it's neutral to the school. We still collect the same amount of money, and I think the easiest way to think about this is just a simple two-person school district. If we had a two-person school district that costs $100, and we both pay 50 to support it, and I get an exemption, the other person in this two-person school is going to pay $100. It's not, the school doesn't cost more, but who pays for it has changed. And this exemption will have that shift or redistribution of taxes. So essentially, the way that works is the total amount comes off of the assessed value, or I'm sorry, the total amount comes off of the assessment for the qualifying individuals, and as a consequence of that, through the math, the rate per thousand of assessed value goes up a little bit, and other taxpayers who don't enjoy the exemption pay a little bit more. So how many veterans are there in the Penfield Central School District within the boundaries of our six towns? According to the last county rule, there are 675 wartime veterans, 448 of those served in combat, that's a 1,123, and of those 1,100 veterans, 101 of them are receiving some level of disability exemption. Now, I mentioned there are various levels, but at the highest level, the highest possible level, which is the level that the county's currently at, a wartime exemption would be an entitlement of up to 15% of the assessed valuation of the home, up to a maximum of $36,000. A combat veteran, 25% exemption up to a maximum of $60,000. And disability is based on 50% of your, 50% of your service-related disability, so 100% disabled veteran would get 50% up to a cap of $120,000. That's in addition to the, to the, to the underlying basic exemption, so conceivably, the maximum exemption at the highest level would be $180,000 exemption for, assessment exemption. That, at that maximum level, that's a reduction to the tax base of about $13.5 million, and it would increase taxes, the tax rate for the other, for all taxpayers by approximately 2%. So obviously, this is a very significant decision. We'll talk about the levels, there are proportionally lower levels that we'll be talking about at, at the next board meeting. I think it's important to recognize that not all of our towns are at the maximum level, like, the county is, Penfield is, Brighton's at a, at a much lower level, the towns of Walworth and Massillon are also a lower level. and Massillon are also a lower level. So, there's some decisions that have to be made around that. I think it's also important to recognize that the county didn't get there overnight. They've built their, they've, you know, they've gotten from a lower level to where they're at now over a course of about 30 years. So, we have a two-step approach. Tonight, one of the things that you'll be confronting in your package is a resolution of concern for funding. Essentially, the resolution, which is being considered, I think it's been passed by Fairport, it's been considered, if not passed, by Pittsburgh. I know that most of the county school districts are addressing either this or another resolution. And what it essentially says is that we're concerned, that this has the potential, certainly, we know it shifts tax burden, we just talked about that, and as a result of that, and because of the decision-making process, it can be inequitable between towns. Different schools in different areas are going to make different decisions, and the rationale that you see expressed in the resolution is that the recognition of veterans shouldn't be dependent on that kind of local decision-making, that this is a state decision, they should make the state decision, that forcing it to the school district level is polarizing, and that really is the state responsibility. So, we could have, well, I know the board will want to have more conversation about that when we get to that point. It's, that resolution's number four, resolution number four on page six of your agenda. But the other thing we need to do is gather information. You know, it's unlikely that the state is going to recant and take this over, so we're going to need to make a decision. This board will have to decide. So, towards that end, we're gathering information. We've sent out a newsletter, we'll be doing an online survey, and we're scheduling a public hearing. So, this is an image of the newsletter's mailing. It's a single-page mailing that does some questions and answers, talks a little bit about, it's just very brief, we just wanted to catch people's attention. It tells them a little bit about it, and it tells them where to go to get more information, which is our website. So, this PowerPoint, other PowerPoints, a much more complete one that you haven't seen yet, but that you will at the next board meeting, will also be on there, so people can start to ask and learn more questions about it. It's in the mail, it'll be mailed the week of October 27th, it should be in folks' homes about that time. The survey is scheduled to run online from the 1st through the 15th, and the public hearing will be at the board meeting on November 18th here. These are the questions. It's a very simple survey. We asked three questions, and it's a, and like many survey questions, it's intended to inform as well as to gauge the public's opinion. So, it asks, we explain a little bit about the exemption, and then we ask, what should we do? Should we take, what should, action should we take? If we fully adopt the exemption, up to $180,000 of a qualifying veterans assessment, understanding that school taxes would be increased by 2%, we should partially adopt the exemption with a maximum of less than 180, understanding that school taxes are proportionally less. We should not adopt the exemption. And we ask a little bit of demographic information, that are you or someone in your household a veteran, and what's your age bracket? We'll take that information to, and be able to talk about that at our public hearing on the 18th. The decision won't be made at that meeting, it's truly a hearing, so we will schedule time for concerned folks to get, to share their opinion. We'll record those opinion, opinions, think about them. We can certainly communicate them to the, back to the board and to the public, but at December 9th, the next board meeting, the board will need to make a decision regarding the exemption, and there's another, a number of other sub-decisions that you'll have to make along the way. Level of exemption, exemption yes or no, if yes, what level? If yes, what about gold star parents who are, parents who are also potentially eligible? There's a number of sub-questions we'll be dealing with at that time. So, are there any questions? Does that schedule calendar make sense? Is there anything you need, would like to know a little bit more about?
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments? Lisa?
I'm concerned that, can you hear me? Sorry. I'm concerned that our questions of the survey are not entirely clear.
There's a missing piece that explains it, so I apologize. I think my PowerPoint is a bit unclear.
No, 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 I get, I'm following.
Okay.
I'm concerned that it doesn't really talk about the shift of taxes, and maybe it does ahead of this section.
It sort of, it does really, our attempt to get to that is if you fully adopt the exemption, understanding that school taxes would be increased by 2%, so that's at the maximum level, that's the shift right there, the 2% shift.
But when I read that, I, without hearing the beginning of the presentation, what it says to me is we're increasing cost.
Can I just?
Not that we're shifting, does that?
It does.
Okay.
So, this slide doesn't show the whole question.
Correct.
What's on the, what's above the question, which is basically Mark's presentation. So, there's a paragraph that explains that shifting of the taxes to non-veterans based on if the exemption was taken.
Correct.
Sort of that introduction paragraph provides that information, as well as the newsletter that's going to go out next week, as well as when people go to the survey, there'll be some other links, including the newsletter, the flyer, with that information.
Okay.
But I think when you see the whole question with that background paragraph, that question you have on, is it clear, is very clear.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, is it better to also maybe clarify a little bit that the overall increase, that this would be in addition to our, any increase we do normally?
Correct.
Which we may or may not have, but likely we might have a 1.8 or something, so 2 plus 1.8 is really 3.8 to avoid any surprises.
Right, absolutely, because remember, this is, this is on the rate, and this is, you know, we always talk about this, and people, I think, do not understand it. So, the tax cap, the famous 2% tax cap, works on our levy, which is the amount of money that we collect. It's the $100 from my example. So, in my example, taxes for one of those two people in our community increased by 100%. But the levy increased by zero, so $100 to run the school district didn't increase at all, and yet taxes increased the rate by 100%. That 2% rate that you see here would be in addition to whatever our normal budget growth would be. So, if under the tax cap, we could go, we don't know this yet, but let's assume that our levy could grow by 2%, that could turn into about 1.5% usually, let's say, let's for argument's sake, say that turns into 2% on the rate. This shift would then add the 2%, so folks would be confronted by a tax bill increase of potentially four. So, even though some of it's shift, some of its, some of its rate, the rate's not controlled by the cap, the levy is, and this runs independent of that. It's a very good point.
And I think you did a great job explaining it, and I think it's just important for the community, and as we reiterate this out there and maybe possibly in a survey as well, to use the words "in addition to" the anticipated rate that we may have or our average rate over the last five years, you know, because you just don't want
People who think that that's it, right.
Coming in May and saying, oh, there you go again, and what happened to our 2% tax cap, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. I, what I'm thinking about while you're, while you're talking to me is that for the presentation at the next board meeting, I think what I would like to begin with is a little, a couple of slides on essentially how, on how that works, the assessed valuation, the exemption, how rate and levy play into that, so that there's sort of a clear, single example that folks could understand. I think that's a, that would be very useful, and I'll make sure that happens.
Catherine?
In the mailing, is that addressed?
Mailing's short, because we needed to get it out, so the, what we'll be, what we'll be doing, it does explain that it increases and would increase the rate, and it directs folks to our website, so we can put as much or as little on the website as we need to be able to communicate.
Onto the website, because, John, it makes a really good point that people, you know, how, everybody is inundated with so much information and what people can take in at one time, and then they understand that it's, that we're talking about one thing, but then they forget that it's in addition to something else. I mean, it's a lot of information with a very big impact, and I'm concerned about the messaging, so.
Understand that 2% is at the maximum, and there's a dozen or so levels of exemption, so it's proportionally less as you go down, so, and that's, it's exactly that conversation that needs to be had as part of the board decision-making.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Camille?
Mark, can you just describe a little bit? I know we have public hearings sometimes, but sometimes it's more of a formality, maybe it's the code of conduct, because the public hearing are our security plan, things like that. What, for the public's sake, what does a public hearing mean, and what does that look like?
Essentially, it is just an opportunity for the public to give their opinion and to ask questions. So, the way I envision it working is we'll have a brief presentation, probably very similar to the one you'll be seeing at the next board meeting, so we'll have two chances to get the complete information out. So, a brief presentation, and then folks who wish can record a comment, they can, you know, leave a comment. The district clerk traditionally keeps track of what folks have to say, it's part of the minutes of that meeting. So, it's really the opportunity for the public to come and share with you their concerns about, or support of, any initiative.
So, is it a, is it a two-way opportunity? Because normally, like, tonight, if we had a visitor, somebody would make a comment, but we're not really, it's not a forum for us to answer any questions.
It's usually typically, well, you can structure it how you would wish, but typically, it's not really structured as a dialogue, it's structured as a presentation and an opportunity for the board to... I don't think I did that.
I don't think I did either one.
It's structured as an opportunity for the board to, to hear what folks have to say.
I think it is different, Camille, from our citizens' comments period, that citizens' comments could be about any topic, you know, that people want to address the board about, while this will be specific about the veterans' exemption. Okay? Any additional questions or comments? Mark, at some point, we talked about having a question, you know, saying, asking people, do you know anything about this exemption? We're not doing that anymore, or are we assuming that because we gave all the information, that people will know now what it's about?
I guess I'm not sure I understand, so, asking...
In our various meetings around the district and also, you know, with other Monroe County school districts, it seems like there's a lot of people who still do not know about the veterans' exemption. So, we were kind of wondering in some conversations about, you know, just asking people, do you know about the exemption, about the veterans' exemption? Is that something we would consider at all, even under, I don't like to add more questions, but under do not adopt the exemption, you know, two sub-questions? Because I do not support it, because I still don't understand it, I mean?
Well, this newsletter is out, so we can't amend this at this point, because it's in the mail.
We can, okay.
Right. I, you know, certainly, we're doing our best to educate the public with regard to the exemption, and folks have the opportunity to learn more. If they don't know about the exemption, you know, everyone in the district will be receiving a newsletter talking about it, so it's their opportunity to learn.
Okay. All right. That answers my questions. Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we'll turn over to...
To Mr. Wagner for a brief audit presentation. So, in your agenda is the acceptance of the basic financial statements and the management letter. This, you've had those documents as well as an executive summary, the basic financial statements now are 40 pages, I think, or more, so Mr. Wagner's been kind enough to provide an executive summary of that data. It's been reviewed by the audit committee at Thursday's meeting, and the committee has accepted it and sent it on for your acceptance and consideration. So, Ray, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. It seems to be working. My pleasure to be here tonight. I'm only going to spend a few moments and give you a quick overview on your financial condition on the financial audit that's been completed for June 2014. Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at the documents, and again, like Mark just said, the audit report itself is turning into be just about 50 pages of a lot of really good information. If you don't have time to really go through it all, the first part, you have a management discussion and analysis, which is about six pages long, and that, if you have time, if you read through that, gives you a little overview as far as where you're at financially. So, that's a good place to start. The other thing is, if you have a chance to go through a very short, six-page summary, which I call the management, the executive summary, and that's what we used as a document in our audit committee last week, and in that, what I've, I've done is I presented comparative numbers in your general fund and in your other funds, your balance sheet, your revenue and expense, and when you look there, you will see your financial condition continues to be very good, very favorable. You will see on the balance sheet where it summarizes your equities, and your equities are your fund balance and your reserves, you will see in total, they went down last year. All right? They went down about $2 million, and that's okay. You still have sufficient reserves and fund balance, and the reason it went down was that you, as a board, authorized transferring money to capital projects out of your capital reserve, and that's exactly what the purpose of capital reserves are, is that they become established by the voters, and you folks approve moving money into capital reserves for future projects, and then you go back to the voters and get approval for projects, and then within that approval, it indicates you're going to use some of the funding out of the capital reserve. So, it works very well, it's like a three-step approach, and that's the way you have done it, and it works very well. And the big reason it works well financially is that when you're funding projects with local money, that provides you an opportunity, when the state aid is rolled into the project, because you get state-aided for a project, is that your local share of a project generally is covered by the local dollars, and in fact, you may end up generating more state-aid building aid than the, whatever you're bonding for a project. So, you can generate a positive revenue flow, and there's not a lot of things that schools have the opportunity today to generate revenues. Your tax cap, obviously, is a big concern, you're limited there. State aid is somewhat limited, based on what things happen in Albany, and you have sales taxes, and that's really about it. So, this is a very positive, long-range planning, and your district has done that for many years, and it certainly is a, it's a big positive as far as your financial result. So, after moving $7 million to the capital reserve, you were able to refund some of that from your operating surplus. You did have some operating surplus from the budget, so $7 million went out, and about $4 million came back in for future projects. So, when you step back and look at that financially, that's extremely positive, that now you've set yourself up for future projects, for funding of future projects, and generating more state aid. So, overall, you continue to be in very good financial shape, your budget's in very good shape, it does generate some surplus, which is, which is good. Your other funds are in good shape. We also reviewed a management letter, we only had a couple of comments in our management letter that are very minor in nature. Corrective action plan, I believe, has been drafted, which needs to go to Albany. Anytime there's a management letter that suggests any recommendations, it's required that a district submit that corrective action plan to Albany, so that's all in place. So, the only things that are still pending are two things, and one is our audit of the extracurricular student funds, and that we will be, if we don't have it scheduled, we'll have it scheduled probably in the next three or four weeks, and with that, we will be going around the buildings, and we'll be talking to advisors, talking to central treasurer, and occasionally... talking to central treasurer. And occasionally, we even pull in one, one or two of the student treasurers and talk to them about their, their bookkeeping and accounting for their fundraisers and their activities. We kind of enjoy that. It's, it's, it's an interesting process. And when they have fundraisers, we ask them to see the, the profit and loss statements. If they sell tickets, we like to see a reconciliation of tickets. We like to see that they're adhering, adhering to all's, uh, sales tax rules and regs, which is what they have to do when they're, when they're out of here. So that process will be, will be done pretty soon. And then the final piece is the compliance audit of your federal dollars. Any federal dollars you get, if you exceed $500,000, which you do and you have, there is a requirement that we look at your federal compliance. So it's more than just looking at the dollars. It's looking at how you spend the dollars, how you account for the dollars, making sure that everything is in order, that like Title I dollars, that the proper students are being served, which goes a little bit beyond normal financial auditing. So that also will be done in the next two to three weeks. So that will complete the process. And at this point, really, everything is looking positive. Okay? Any questions at all?
All right. Thank you for coming this evening, Ray. We appreciate the audit and the letters that went with it. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? John?
Just as, on the audit committee, you know, you have the public and you have board members and I wanted the community to be aware of that. But also, you made a statement during the year that there might be eight to 10 school districts that may have to exceed the cap next year because of their financial condition. Could you just comment on that?
Oh, yes. Yes. Right now, especially right now, when I travel around the, the state and we go as far, we go as far as White Plains. So we have a lot of districts around the state. And we deal with 70 schools. So there's probably 10 schools that, when they close their books this coming year, will have very little surplus, very little reserves. And they will be really hard-pressed with decision-making as far as what, what will they do? How far can you cut programs? Do you cut benefits? Do you cut salaries? It's going to be very difficult because of the tax cap. So then the decision will be, well, should they try to, you know, exceed the cap, which some schools did this past year because their finances were starting to tighten up. Some of them were successful and there were a couple that didn't, didn't make it. So the, the atmosphere out there on those schools, and I'm thinking about 10% of the schools in the state, will have some significant financial issues come this next June. And the decisions are going to be very difficult. So that's why you are not in that situation and, and that's a good thing. But, but there are, there will be, in fact, when you go to, to New York, to the school boards conference, I'm sure you will talk to people, if you're going, you will talk to people on, on boards that are facing some real serious financial issues, primarily the smaller schools. But there are a couple that are fairly large that I'm aware of that are running out of money and running out pretty quickly. So.
Thanks, Ray. I think it's important just for the public to know in general that, and the audit committee feels that way too, that, you know, our staff has done a great job. Obviously, you have your role. And there is a correlation between what we saw earlier on high achievement from Mr. Pfeiffer to our finances. And things fall in line because if that doesn't work, there is a programmatic impact and that's what they'll be suffering. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or comments? All right. Just one comment, I think, for the public because I was asked once. This is only an audit of the school district. Has nothing to do with auditing PTAs, booster club, or any of the parent organizations. They have their own audit committee and have their own financial practices. So, you know, that we do not take care of that at all. So.
That is correct.
All right. Well, we thank you for the outstanding work. And Dr. Sansu, if you could please convey our thanks to your office always for making this job easy.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. And just one piece of follow-up as well. Mr. Wager mentioned that there is a, needs to be a response to the items contained in the management letter. So, well, what used to be called the management letter, but which is now identif- communicating internal control related matters identified in the audit. So you have that. I thought management letter was a little crisper. But you have that. The agenda item tonight in the agenda where you accept the audit report contains our responses and our plan for addressing those. So it's, you have it here tonight. It's all part of that. And it's that agenda item that we submit to the state in response to the audit. So it tidies up tonight.
Thank you, Mark. All right. Thank you for coming this evening.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you.
I guess this concludes superintendent's report. Thank you. Board members, we are on page three of your agenda, board business. You have a series of change orders for Scribner Road, Bay Trail, they're all titled Bay Trail, Scribner, and it's the Scribner Roof and Bay Trail Gym Project. May I have a motion, please, that the change orders as described in your agenda that have been reviewed by and are supported by architect Victor Misselli, project manager Gary Hoffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and assistant superintendent for business Marks and Sucey be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Financial report, the audit report, we just had a presentation. We were able to make a few comments and get answers to whatever questions we had. At this point, may I have a motion, please, that the audit by Ray F. Wager, CPA, PC of the district's basic financial statements and the associated management letter for the year ending June 30th, 2014 be accepted? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Bosse's intermunicipal fueling agreement. Monroe Number One Bosse has requested permission to refuel the vehicles used for the Penfield Central School District Driver Ed program at our pumps located at the bus garage on Five Mile Line Road. The district currently allows the Monroe County Sheriff's Department and the Penfield Fire District to fuel their vehicles at the district pumps. The district is reimbursed for this gas based on a cost of gas on state contract plus 10 cents per gallon surcharge. The agreement with Monroe Number One Bosse's driver ed program is under the same terms. Entering this agreement with Monroe Number One Bosse does not pose a burden on the district and benefits the students enrolled in driver education. Approval is recommended. So we have a resolution in our agenda, whereas Number One Bosse's driver ed program has indicated a desire to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the Penfield Central School District. And whereas the Board of Education finds that there is mutual benefit to such an arrangement, therefore be resolved that the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Monroe Number One Bosse's driver ed program for the provision of vehicle refueling for the period August 1st, 2014 to July 31st, 2017. May I have a motion, please, that this resolution be approved?
So moved.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Approval of EFP Rottenberg as internal auditor. Chapter 236 of the laws of 2005, which is the Controller's Five Point Plan, requires in part that each school district have an internal auditor. The role of the internal auditor is to review the district's financial risks and ensure that there are proper procedures in place with regard to financial controls. Selection of an internal auditor is done through an RFP process every five years. Monroe County districts have cooperated to solicit for internal auditing firms through an RFP process. This RFP was coordinated for the five-year period beginning with the 2014-15 school year by the Rush Henrietta School District for a consortium of 14 school districts. In addition to costs, districts may take, the district may take other factors such as experience, qualifications, et cetera, into account. Six area CPA firms provided quotes. The total five-year cost of the Rottenberg quote was within $370 of the lowest quote, and the Rottenberg rate for additional services was lower. The firms, the firm has significant school-based internal auditing experience, serving in this capacity for several county school districts and is familiar with the district. The audit responses have been reviewed by the audit committee. Appointment of EFP Rottenberg is recommended. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education appoints EFP Rottenberg as the district's internal auditor for the five-year period beginning July 1st, 2014? Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor, six in favor, none opposed. Resolution of concern for funding of veterans' exemption. Resolution of concern related to shifting the veterans' tax exemption from New York State onto local school district. Whereas in December of 2013, New York State amended the real property tax law, shifting the burden of setting veteran tax exemptions from the state onto the local school districts. And whereas while the Penfield Central School District thanks and values the role of veterans in our community and their service to our nation, there remains significant concerns with such legislation as it does not address or otherwise take into consideration key questions involving the differences in financial and medical needs among veterans, impacts on the community as a whole, and the impact on non-veteran taxpayers. And whereas, such legislation does not address or otherwise take into consideration that such a shifting of the burden of setting this exemption creates an information gap for the local school districts as New York State data about veterans' exemptions are recorded for counties, towns, villages, and cities, but not school district, whose boundaries often encompass portions of multiple municipalities. And whereas, because of the aforementioned information gap, school districts are not in a position to fully understand the financial impacts, including increase in tax rates on non-veteran community members. And whereas, if such exemptions are not equitable across school districts, such may lead to property devaluation within particular communities. And whereas, when such potential exemptions are considered in light of other recent tax restrictions placed on school districts by New York State, such as the tax cap, there remains questions on what the impact of such exemptions would have on the ability of schools to meet its duty to provide a free and appropriate education. And whereas, such legislation would appear to have the unintended consequences of polarizing communities. And whereas, such legislation would also appear to support the belief that veterans should be given different benefits for the same service based solely upon where they choose to live in New York State. Now therefore, be it resolved that for reasons articulated above, the Penfield Central School District calls upon the governor, the New York State Senate and Assembly to enact legislation that would require the state of New York to accept its responsibility in setting such exemptions and not shift its responsibility onto local school district. And be it further resolved that any such exemptions imposed by the state, such be equal across all communities as our veterans' service should not be valued differently simply based upon the place they choose to live. May I have a motion, please, that this resolution be approved?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We are now at policy review. We have policies that are here for a first reading. And first one is 5720, transportation of students' policy, and it is accompanied by regulations. 5720, R1, transportation of students' regulation. Camille, are you taking us?
I'll do it.
Or Catherine?
Yeah, thank you.
Transportation of students' policy, what the difference, there's a couple of changes here. One is the, the title of the policy went from transportation of student eligibility requirement to simply transportation of students. And then at the bottom of the page, the underlying section of transportation of personal vehicles is what's different about that. So those are the changes to that.
This policy is here for a first read and will now go up on our website for anybody from the public to comment on it. And it will be back for approval at a future meeting. Any questions at this point about it, board members? No? All right. Thank you. A policy that is here for second reading is 7411, Extracurricular and Athletic Code of Conduct. Did we receive any comment from the public about it? No? Okay. All right. So this policy is here for approval. May I have a motion, please, that policy 7411 be approved as presented on October 7th, 2014?
So moved.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Audit Committee Charter. Per Commissioner's Regulations, it is necessary to re-adopt the Penfield Audit Committee Charter each year. The charter was reviewed and re-adapted with no changes by the committee at their October 16th, 2014 meeting. The charter was given to the Board of Education prior to this meeting for review. So you've had a chance to look at it. May I have a motion, please, that the Penfield Audit Committee Charter is approved as submitted?
So moved.
Questions or comments about the charter? Thank you. All those in favor, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. May I have a motion, please, that Mary Hill be appointed as attendance keeper for 2014-2015 school year pursuant to, I'll never know these. To Section 8 of New York Code, New York State Code of Rules and Regulations, Section 104.
So moved.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Reinstituting the Purchasing Agent. The purchasing agent returned from an extended leave on October 8th, 2014. At this time, it is recommended that we reappoint Kim Adorante as purchasing agent effective October 8th, 2014. May I have a motion, please, that Ms. Kim Adorante be reappointed purchasing agent for the Penfield Central School District?
So moved.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor, six in favor, none opposed. Thank you. President's Remark. We are all going to New York State School Board this weekend. That should be interesting. If you do not have your requests to Marcia on which workshops do you want, it is not too late to do so, but you have to pick them up yourself. She brought this evening whatever requests she received already. And per Camille's email, which was a very kind reminder to all of us, if we could share what workshops we are taking so that we don't all end up in one room, you know, and this way we just get more information from the convention. And that's it for President's Remark. Under unfinished business, we have none at this point. Under new business, we have an item that is not on our agenda, but that was emailed to you, and that is the evaluation tool of the acting superintendent, Dr. Putnam. And John will lead this discussion.
It's, it's the role of the vice president to take the lead or facilitate the superintendent's evaluation, which we do in a timely fashion at the same time every year. And we have two documents that we utilize. One is the document that the board uses. And the second is what we call an upward evaluation, which is done very similar to the business world where those individuals that report to the superintendent are given a series of questions to report, ask certain questions. And this in turn really helps a leader in a sense to learn more and achieve more as a result of getting input in a 360 manner from the individuals that report to him. This has been, what we're, we're going to be utilizing is the same document we used with Dr. Grimm and Dr. Karlovati over the past several years. So we're staying consistent with the document, which has always been our goal. We basically use a document that we have pieced together from various sources, including New York State Superintendent's Association and some other areas that we've utilized to do that. So we have this in place. You have copies of it. Our process will begin in late spring as it traditionally does. And then we have a timeline that's put in place to deliver it to the acting superintendent. And although we have an acting superintendent this year, we felt it's important to keep the process in place because it's very critical. And Dr. Putnam has seen these documents and as per his contract. So we're all on the same page on what the process will be. So it's, we're a little bit ahead of the game, but because we've been consistent in what we've used, it's great to have it and you all have it. And then I'll put a timeline together that we'll have that'll basically end sometime in June when we finish the process.
Thank you, John. Any questions or comments about the two documents you have received? All right. Thank you.
Carol, just a comment back on the convention. Camille had mentioned too, you know, in New York City, the rooms are smaller. So getting there earlier is better, even though we may have our great intentions of getting to a session. I know we got closed out three or four years ago of several sessions because it's just the nature of the, because we don't use the convention center, we're using the hotel. So that's something to keep in mind too. And, and as a group, we'll be gathering, as we discussed, about 6 o'clock on Sunday night to talk about everything that's critical to the convention. to talk about everything that's critical to the convention.
All right. Thank you, John, for the reminder. All right. There being no further business, may I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 8:15?
So moved.
Questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Six in favor, none opposed. Thank you.